I would like to call the meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meet Monday, January 9th, 2023. It is now 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubana.
Present.
Six members you have.
Six members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can. Give a moment of silence. Please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the nomination and election of the city council president. I would like to now accept nominations for the president for the 2023 council session. I would like to recognize Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to place into nomination the name of Noel Dubana. He's been the council president for one year now. He's done a great job as president. He's kept everything moving, kept the wheels of government turning, and has done a great job. So I would like to offer his name and nomination.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Counselor Liang.
Thank you. I'd like to second the nomination and to say that as the immediate past president, you know, we were entirely virtual for two full calendar years. And I don't know if we've ever sort of paused because we sort of jumped right back into it, right, under your leadership and, you know, have gotten right back to work. And I think it's important to take this opportunity and use it, Mr. President, if I could, to just stop and say thank you, right? You brought us back into person, back into the chambers, and again, got us right back into work, I think so productively and so well enough that we didn't even recognize that there was a big shift that had to happen the last two years. So I'm really proud to be working under your leadership as president and commend the work that you've done this last year and am really proud to second your nomination for this next year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for president?
I would like to make a motion to close nominations.
Okay. With the motion made by Counselor Phelan and seconded by Counselor Liang, I will now call the roll for nomination of the city council president. Counselor Andronico.
Noel Dubana.
Counselor Kane.
Noel Dubana.
Counselor Harris.
Noel Dubana.
Counselor Liang.
Noel Dubana.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Phelan.
Noel Dubana.
President Dubana.
Noel Dubana.
Seven members.
Seven members. Motion carries.
Motion carries. With the unanimous vote, congratulations, Counselor Dubana, president of the 2023 city council session.
Thank you. I want to thank my fellow counselors for their votes and confidence in me to lead us into the 2023 for another year. As I look back on the experience of the role of Quincy City Council presence, I've realized it's been very educational year. Each Wednesday before our city council meet, and I sit down with the mayor, city clerk, auditor, clerk of committees, and executive secretary to the mayor, and together, we set the agenda for the upcoming meeting. That's previously before the meeting. And then after the meeting, I always enjoy the day after of the city council meeting talking with Joe Catalano on Quincy Access Television. We start off the conversation with how the weather is, and then we discuss the city council agenda items. And we always end our Zoom interview with how many steps I currently have on my Fitbit watch because I'm usually walking around doing the Zoom meeting. I've learned that approaching the three-year of this lingering COVID-19 pandemic, anything is possible. I hope that my fellow counselors enjoyed the holidays over the last few weeks with family and friends. The committee assignments will continue to stay the same. Thank you to all the committee chairs for their hard work this past year. 2023 will be an important year to get things accomplished. I look forward to leading us into the future and over the next 12 months. Thank you. And with that, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2023-002, adoption of the 2023 city council meeting schedule.
Counselor Phelan.
Will you accept the schedule?
Motion made by Counselor Phelan to accept the schedule. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number three, 2023-003, order approval of locations of the solar energy implementation on public properties.
Counselor and chairperson of the ordinance committee, McCarthy, is not here. If someone could make a motion to refer this into ordinance, a motion made by Counselor Phelan, seconded by Counselor Andronico, to put this into ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? I'm sorry, Counselor Mahoney, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a note that although I'm totally in favor of this, that in the area of the dog park, there's going to be some trees that are going to be coming down, just if we could have kind of an accounting of trees that are being removed and how we're going to be able to account for replacement of that, just for that section.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Mr. Walker.
Yep.
Go right ahead.
Through you, Mr. President, of course, Counselor. Just to be clear, what this order is, is it just the table setter for a future RFP that will go out for solar panels on available city property? It doesn't say we may not do it at the dog park or the dog shelter. This just creates the opportunity for us to make the public space available. What will happen is we'll issue the RFP, a company will come back, or multiple companies will come back with a proposal, and then we'll pick and choose where we want to put them. To the Counselor's point, there's going to be plenty of time to discussion on where these arrays will be going and what needs to happen for the arrays to go certain places.
With that also, Counselor Mahoney, I just talked to Counselor McCarthy just an hour ago, and he's going to have some input on it and allow some dialects. So just so you know, he's going to be, it's going into committee, so he'll.
I don't know how well it's going to go to committee. I just think it's important to state those things up in front because sometimes we don't get the packages or the presentations until we're actually at the council meeting. So those conversations have to happen before when they go to RFP. So I appreciate it, and I know that they'll do their best they can to make sure that if we are going to have them located there, that we'll be assuring that we're accountable for those trees as well. Thanks.
Okay, so any other counselors? We have a motion made by Counselor Phelan and seconded by Counselor Andronico to put this in the ordinance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2023-004, gift for $20 from S.L. Kapib for dear.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor Phelan. Any discussion on this roll? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members. Motion carries in the affirmative. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2023-005, a gift for $85 from Li En Ning and Yoc Tan Ying for the Quincy Police Department.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Phelan, seconded by Counselor Andronico. Any discussion on this vote? On this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, presentation EPA consent decree.
Commissioner Gracioso, counselors, before we get started, just want to allow this team and Commissioner Gracioso to present this discussion, and then we will go to counselors. I also want to put in Rule 10, which is debate limitation up to 15 minutes. We'll allow all counselors adequate amount of time each, and then after everyone gets a chance, everyone will allow another five minutes. Okay. Commissioner Gracioso, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors, and first of all, happy New Year to you all. Hope you had a great New Year. We're here this evening to give an update on the city's consent decree and compliance update with the EPA. Joining me this evening are City GIS Administrator Steve Washburn and Joe Shea from Granite City Partners. City Engineer Paul Costello could not join us this evening due to previous engagement. When we talk about clean water, we're not talking about water we drink, but referring to the waters in our beaches, streams, and brooks. And Quincy has always dedicated resources to our stormwater systems and sewer collection system to keep the waterways clean. In 2016, the EPA expressed intentions to control Quincy's approach to water quality issues. We felt this was a significant government overreach and pushed back. Quincy was already doing most of what the EPA wanted and worked hard to convince them of that. EPA wanted to force about $200 million in projects over a 10-year period. But thanks to the hard work of many, including city solicitor Jim Timmons, city engineer Paul Costello, Joe Shea, and Woodard and Curran, we convinced the EPA that the city had made many positive advances in executed programs over the last decade to protect and improve our water quality. Just an example, we submitted a stack of 18 of these that came about this high that showed all the work that we had previously done and been doing in the city. I don't even know if they read it, but it had described all of our work. The EPA had not given us credit for any work that was done beyond the 200-foot buffer zone of our beaches, and our argument was, we manage the whole city. Our city is not just Wallaston Beach. It's Furnace Brook area, the Montclair Boggs, the Town Brook. We argued that we should get credit for all of the work that had been done in those areas. The city prevailed in negotiating $100 million over 15 years, in which we have already been investing $5 to $6 million a year in improvements. The first 18 months of activities have continued with high priority construction projects and complete reports to set plans for operational changes and technology advances. There's been significant interdepartment integration of activities with inspectional services, the Health Department, Natural Resources, and TPAL. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Joe Shea and Steve Washburn to take us through our presentation. And at the end, we'll be open to any questions you may have. Thank you. Joe? You need those papers?
I'm memorizing. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for having me, Mr. President. I'm Joseph Shea with Granite City Partners. I'm here tonight to give an update, as the Commissioner had introduced. For the past 10 years, I was also with a firm named Woodard and Curran, who worked closely on all of these matters. So I stand here both with my previous occupation and now my current firm within the city, working on clean water issues. When we talk about clean water issues or clean water pipes, we are talking about sewer pipes and drain pipes. The sewer pipes that come out of our houses and buildings and go into the sewer mains in the streets and eventually make it to the MWRA sewer system. And the drain pipes, the drain pipes that might collect from roof drain leaders definitely collect from catch basins and flow to our waterways, whether it's Furnace Brook, Town Brook, the bog. We have a tremendous amount of sewer and drain infrastructure within the city of Quincy. Much of it is very old. When we speak about our water quality assets, we're talking about over 200 miles of sewer and 150 miles of drain pipe. When it comes to the sewer, 18 miles are within the 200 feet of the mean high water. This was the EPA's original target, was making sure that we were hyper-focused on the 18 miles. However, we truly know our city, and we know that we've got to put together a systematic program for the entire city, not just the portions of the sewer that are immediately adjacent to the ocean. We also at High Tide have about five miles of sewers under the ocean, and I've got some graphics to explain that. You wouldn't think that the ocean water would be above sewers, but they are. For those who've been down the causeway and seen the manholes on the right-hand side, there are sewers connected underneath that marsh. It's our job to make sure that those sewers don't leak out, thus causing contamination to enter the marsh and the waters of the United States. We have over 25,000 private sewer laterals coming out of the buildings. We have six sewer pump stations, six sewer siphons, that's a specialty piece of infrastructure, and we have five major connections with the MWRA. So that's just on the sewer side of Quincy's business. On the drain pipe side, there are 188 pipe outfalls within the city. We've located each and every one of them. We've mapped them. We've sampled them, and we'll talk more about that. There's 52 tide gates to prevent flooding in the ocean from coming back in. There's over 3,000 drain manholes, over 9,000 catch basins, each of which we clean, five stormwater pumping stations, three drainage siphons, and dozens and dozens of interconnections with state agencies and our neighboring communities. Cataloging and managing all of the water quality assets in the city of Quincy really is an enormous undertaking. However, the city has had programs in place for decades to manage water and sewer infrastructure. The EPA, through the negotiation process of a couple years, learned through all of these binders, the significant effort and programmatic approach that the city has used. I do believe that's why we were able to significantly reduce the EPA's attempt at duration and at costs for the consent decree. The city's sewer system was split up into a number of, quote, "areas" that we broke down to assess, and the city's drainage infrastructure was broken up into a number of what's called "catchments." Because we're working with a federal agency, you're going to hear a lot of vernacular like MS4, the fancy way of saying the municipal separate storm sewer system. Think of it as your drain pipes, the MS4 system. As I had said earlier, the city had easily a strong decade of expanding efforts and programs related to the sewer collection system. We systematically brought the EPA, their technical advisors, their lawyers through. The city had already introduced a programmatic approach to upgrade their pump stations. The city had already brought in technology to better manage the operation of their fixed assets. If there were a flood and the strand station were to go down, which happens, the city would get an alarm, and we would be aware, we could deploy mobile pumps to the strand. The city had already set up interdepartment coordination on items such as FOG, another fancy term. This is an attractive term. It stands for fats, oils, and grease. But when these constituents of fats, oils, and grease enter the system, from one perspective, they're a Health Department issue because of restaurants and grease traps; from another perspective, they're a plumbing code issue; from a third perspective, they're a DPW issue because they reduce the capacity in the sewer. Fats, oils, and grease will clog your sewer. So the city has now an integrated programmatic effort between those three departments that was well underway before the EPA came to town to make sure those departments were not working in silos, but were working with each other. The city has also advanced a number of public notification issues on sewers, some of which Mr. Washburn will get in to in detail. On the drainage side, the city has gone out and done both wet and dry weather sampling at each of the 188 outfalls twice. So they've located all of the outfalls, gone and sampled them. When it's dry weather, when it's dry weather, there should be nothing coming out. The philosophy is if there is liquid coming out, yet it hasn't rained, we need to make sure that's not sewage. Wet weather sampling is mostly rainwater, much trickier to get out there and sample 188 outfalls when it's wet weather. You want to do it during the daytime. You want to have the appropriate rain. But we've accomplished it. We've accomplished it twice. So we have built volumes of information about the quality and caliber of the city's water and sewer, excuse me, water and storm drain system. There has also been, I'll say, coordination with DCR. DCR owns all of the outfalls along Wallaston Beach and owns a number of outfalls within your city, as does Mass DOT. So I spoke briefly about the coordination with departments. We also coordinate with the state agencies. In summary, what the expanding efforts has meant is that the city spends over $1 million annually on the operation and maintenance of the sewer system and $6 to $7 million annually for the proactive and reactive sewer repairs. Through this council, we have built a model of expending MWRA funds and state revolving funds first, spending the money that is available to us through various programs. The MWRA program is a wonderful program for the city of Quincy. It's excellent money for the repair of sewer infrastructure. That's why you see us about once every two years getting authorization to spend either no-interest loans, sometimes there were grants, or there are low-interest loan applications. On the drainage side, the city expends about $500,000 or more on the maintenance of their drainage system. Oftentimes, we come here to ask for a transfer from the Sewer and Drainage Rehabilitation Fund, paid in by developers and building permit fees. Again, not off the tax rate, but using that fund for the purposes of funding drainage system improvements. We also can use the state revolving fund loan program for stormwater and water quality For some relevant examples as to what we've done during our interactions with the EPA, a great example is the fixing the sewer on Bayside Beach in Squanum. For those of you who know Bayside Beach, it's a beautiful roadway up on a bluff, flows down to Orchard Beach. But if you look at this picture, you'll notice in the water, there are these items sticking up. They look like miniature lighthouses. Those are sewer manholes because there is an active sewer under the water that we need to make sure remains tight so sewage doesn't enter the ocean and the waters of the United States. That sewer was very much in disrepair in 2009. These are actual photos of the manholes at low tide and the pipe laying on the beach. And the city, through a council approval, came in in 2010 and replaced the sewer and replaced the manholes to make them all watertight. Not an easy job, since when the tide came in, you've got to get out of the way. If your tide cycle wasn't one that was very convenient to daylight, you'd be working in the evening hours, or you'd be working when the sun came up at 6:00 AM. The Bayside Beach project, in our opinion, was a thriving success of how we can fix some of the challenges of our aging infrastructure. It's not easy, but you can get it done. However, the Bayside Beach project was also the project that brought the EPA to town with a more focused effort on what the city was doing. The EPA notified the city in 2016 that they had come out into the field, and they had found a leaking coupling up on the bluff on Bayside. This is a picture of the coupling, and that sewage was dripping out of that coupling. Therefore, the city was contaminating the waters of the United States. The EPA actually used the term dumping, dumping sewage into the waters of the United States. We were absolutely dripping or weeping water in. And so therefore, once they put us on notice, we came back out, and not only had we fixed, previously fixed, the sewer along the beach under the water, that's highlighted in blue up on the screen and in your handout, but then we also lined all of the red pipes and all of the orange pipes on your handout and as shown on the screen to make sure that any sewers contributing to the sewer under the water had been lined. And when I say lined, what I actually mean is we pour in a plastic liner and seal coat the inside of everything. Technically, it's called a cured-in-place pipe liner. It's a plastic resin, but it basically makes everything watertight with a monolithic seal. So all of the laterals, all of the manholes, all of the pipes along Bayside Beach were lined. This is a technology we now use throughout the whole city on a year-to-year basis. But that's an example of one of the projects that we really felt was a success, and the EPA felt was an example of where the city should be doing more. Certainly came back in 2017 and did more. Another example project is the sewer along Furnace Brook between Merrymount and Quincy Shore Drive. The sewer is not in the roadway. It runs along the side of Blacks Creek. Some of you, I'm sure, have seen the manholes out there. In this case, we didn't bring up, we did not dig up Blacks Creek, but we pulled a singular plastic line all the way through the sewer. That way, we knew there was a single sewer from one end to the other with no joints whatsoever. Therefore, no sewage could get out and impact the water quality in Blacks Creek. Then we really started to roll. We did some work on the Avalon Beach in Bay Point in 2018. Another beach we wanted to make sure was not leaking because the sewers that come out of Twin Rivers actually run along the beach. They're not in roadways. We spent time ensuring and sampling that those sewers were not leaking. And then by way of one more example, in 2020, the Strand Pump Station had a catastrophic failure during one of the storms, and the complete area was inundated. This, too, is a problem in the EPA's eyes, and I agree. When neighborhoods get inundated like this, the sewage and the stormwater co-mingle. Both systems overflow. So the city has infrastructure in place to make sure that flooding doesn't happen. We've certainly, it's a different presentation, but we've made great strides with respect to neighborhood flooding. But the Strand Pump Station has now been upgraded with a new station, a more robust station, a higher, it's higher above the floodplain station. During this period of time that I've just talked about, from 2017 to 2022, I gave you just an example of some flagship projects, but the reality is we were working on dozens and dozens of roadway sewers as well. You can see on the chart and how many miles of sewers we were repairing. So we've touched at least 306 roadways, or actually, including this coming year. We will be over 300 roadways with sewers in them that we will have repaired with the specific purpose of ensuring that no sewage is leaking out. There is an additional benefit that we're also not getting inflow or infiltration leaking in, rainwater leaking in that you have to pay for, whereas it's not sewage, it's rainwater. And up to 40 miles, if you remember, there's 208 miles, so really, 20% of the city has been remedied or addressed just in the first couple of years. Counselors, within the packet that you have towards the back, I think it's sheet 41 through 44, the actual streets, far too many to list here in a presentation, but if you'd like to look at your ward and look at the individual streets, those are in the handouts that was at your seat tonight. While the city was continuing to do all of that programmatic annual work coming before you to get funding requests from the MWRA or the SRF, in parallel, we were also working with the EPA for them to understand the solid work that the city had been doing. That came to a conclusion in August of 2021, when a significantly reduced consent decree was finalized between the city, the US EPA, and the US DOJ. It was a 15-year program. Within your packet and on the slide was the name of a number of the activities that needed to happen. Because it's a federal program, again, we've got a lot of word soup, but we've got IDDE efforts for illicit discharge detection and elimination. We've got CMOM programs for capacity operations and maintenance management. We have a, the city previously had a geographic information We have a, the city previously had a geographic information systems, a GIS system. It's now been notably expanded, and I'm going to let Stephen speak about that. And the city submits annual infrastructure plans to the EPA in the spring, updating them on all of these reports. Some of the other initial actions that are not capital projects or reports, but the city has continued to do DPW employee training on dealing with issues such as sewer backups and sewer overflows, how to properly deal with siltation on construction sites, so we're not pumping silt into any of our waterways. As I said, we'd been to one hundred and eighty-eight of the outfalls twice, so the drainage system has been remapped and updated. We've done the illicit discharge detection and elimination program report. That has been approved by the EPA. Outfall investigations will continue to be ongoing for years as part of a separate EPA MS four program, but we will continue to do it within the umbrella of the consent decree as well. There's been some ordinances regarding illicit discharges that we've done some work on. Public education continues. Sewer repairs go on annually, and the city has done a notable upgrade to its asset management technology and approaches. And for that portion of the presentation, I'd like to hand it over to GIS Administrator Stephen Washburn.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Mr. President, for having me here this evening. For the record, my name is Stephen Washburn, GISP, and I'm working on my third year here serving the city as GIS administrator. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the GIS component of the city's response to the consent decree. As Mr. Shea foreshadowed, there was an incredible amount of data that's been created through the city's response over the years to these conditions. And that data has been stored in several formats. It's come from several sources, and in some cases, it was not entirely complete. So a rigorous GIS-driven data discovery and compilation process was performed where years, and I think I can safely say, in fact, decades of data was reviewed. A standardized schema was developed with guidance from federal and state input, as well as input from Esri, CityWorks, and Microsoft, some of the vendors that were supporting our initiative. Following this review, the data was compiled and arranged in a Microsoft SQL database that sits in a server here locally in the city. That deployment was aided by the city's Information Technology Department. The GIS pattern that we've deployed in the city here has several components, but we'll focus on, I think, the primary elements of our deployment. The SQL Server or the database that I've described housing all of our data, an Esri Enterprise GIS deployment that facilitates the city's GIS needs, and a CityWorks Asset Management System that significantly elevated the city's capabilities in the realm of asset and maintenance management. Following this effort, there's been some significant improvements to the way the city has managed data, the associated workflows, and the response to the consent decree. Interdepartmental coordination and collaboration in these systems has been phenomenally successful. Departments, certainly not limited to those listed by Mr. Shea, but that include Public Works, T-PAL, Natural Resources, and others, have all been involved in contributing to the function of the system. We've modernized the asset maintenance and permitting management of the city so that in many cases where paper forms or other historic mechanisms were in place, we've modernized them with digital forms, applications, and GIS-powered solutions that provide a more reliable result. We've used iPads and other tablets in the field for field data collection purposes. We've enhanced desktop mapping and analysis. Some of the maps Mr. Shea has just displayed in his portion of the presentation. And we've been able to leverage this data in ways like dashboards and other near-real-time data-driven solutions to better inform ourselves as we perform these efforts for the city and to better inform our constituents. I think that at the end of my list here, but certainly probably most important, is that GIS has provided, I think, all of the resources necessary, technologically speaking, to satisfy the regulatory demands of the consent decree. I'm going to go through a few screenshots now of examples of the solutions that have been deployed, and I'll provide a very superficial description of how they're being used in the city today. Here we have some examples of mobile applications being used in the city. So where paper forms historically were used to log catch basin cleaning and inspections, we now use mobile applications and digital forms on tablets or even a cellular device, a cellphone, in a pinch. This data becomes available in near-real time to the dashboards and maps used to inform decision-making in public works and throughout the city and creates a live link between the field staff and administrative staff in the city. Here we have an example of an outfall screening dashboard that was used throughout the outfall sampling activities that Mr. Shea has described, and this allowed us to track in real time the progress of both the dry and wet weather sampling occurring on the stormwater outfalls as the work was completed. This created an environment where we knew exactly where we were day to day and had a very good sense of where we were in regards to the the target that was prescribed. Here we have an example of a web application that can be used to review tabular data and download it for other purposes and third-party applications. This is used not only internally by the city, but by city consulting staff that further enhance and serve our needs. Here we have a dashboard with similar data as opposed to the app that we've just reviewed. This dashboard provides a more macro-level oversight for the commissioner, for the city engineer, and others that take a look at this on a day-by-day or even minute-by-minute basis to fathom just where we are in the the process. Here we have a CityWorks Asset Management Dashboard. This is showing work that's been performed that affects assets in the city. As the work is completed, it shows up and is reflected in this dashboard so we can see year over year, month over month, day over day, the work that's been completed, the type of work, and whom is performing that work. It's another CityWorks dashboard that houses interconnection sampling activities. These activities are performed actually by third-party consultants that serve city staff. And I think what's important to punctuate here is that not only city staff is using these systems, but consulting solutions that we've enlisted are also operating within this environment. We have another work-tracking dashboard that tracks by type and state of completion, another CityWorks product. This is a basic web map that shows outfall inspection status. The beauty of this product is that while it's far more lightweight than the dashboards I've just reviewed, this can be embedded in almost any solution. So a website, linked in a text message or otherwise gets used quite frequently in that regard. And here we have a traditional PDF map that's been generated from our GIS desktop software. This lists a number of analytical processes that have performed on the sewer network, whether it be CCTV, smoke testing, or other physical inspection of the infrastructure. Here we have a sewer rehab historic tracking web app. This allows us to see sewer lining, open-cut rehabilitation that's occurred, and we also have proposed work slated in here so that as contracts are prepared and reviewed for bid, this can serve as a tool for conversation. Here we have the Engineering Utilities Web App. This is a very potent tool used internally by the city engineer and other engineering staff. This houses all of our utility data, topographic information, testing results, and is updated in near-real time from several data sources. City engineer is in this daily without exception, and I hear all the time when something else needs to be added. Here is an example of our web-based SSO notification system. So previously, I talked about how web maps can be embedded on websites. On the city website, we have a notification system that's been configured that allows constituents to sign up for email notifications when the rare SSO event occurs. This notification system is also configured to notify local newspapers and media outlets, and it also updates an embedded web map on the city's webpage so that a user could select an individual event on the map and see details about the remedy that occurred in response to the SSO that had been recorded in the system. So these are just a number of examples of how we've leveraged GIS technology to satisfy the demands of the consent decree. Yeah, so thank you for that. Thank you for listening to my portion of the presentation. And with that, I'll hand you back to Mr. Shea, who's going to talk about some of the routine maintenance that occurs that is now being logged in that GIS system.
Thank you. Yeah, so we've we've spoken about capital projects. We've spoken about technology. DPW also does significant daily routine maintenance. I could see you all taking copious notes on Steve's slides, so you picked up that two thousand one hundred and twenty-five stormwater pipes have already been inspected. Most of that has been done by the DPW staff in their daily routines. DPW's maintenance through the operating budget also does a number of important regulatory tasks in using the technology that Stephen described. It gets logged right in parallel with any of the work done by contractors or consultants. It's an, and now, I'm not going to use a fancy term, but it's a harmonious system in that it's not what the operations staff does and then what others do, it's what the city does and gets credit for. So this is a list of a number of the tasks that the city operations staff does that gets regulatory credit and gets logged routinely, including outfall repairs, including dealing with catch basins, including dealing with tide gate repairs. A significant amount of maintenance is done by the staff underneath Commissioner Grazioso. Certainly want to put a shout out for all of the men and women of DPW who work so hard for the city of Quincy. To memorialize all of that work in accordance with the consent decree, the city has to submit compliance reports, and to date, we have submitted five compliance reports. The dates are on the screen. All of these compliance reports are on the city's website under the DPW tag, under regulatory compliance. You can read them. I do caution anybody, don't push print and walk away. These are hundreds of pages of data. Using the electronic tools to scroll through is a much more efficient way to save yourself cases of paper and printer ink. The next DPW consent decree document is due on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and to date, these documents of the city's work over the first eighteen months has all been found to be compliant with the EPA requirements. With that, so we'll encourage everybody to to review these documents, look out for the next EPA compliance report. And with that, I will hand this back to Commissioner Grazioso to wrap up.
Thank you, Joe. So we will continue to aggressively execute high-priority water quality improvement construction projects while integrating our approach into the other city priorities. With our semi-annual EPA updates, we will be submitted, public outreach, and public education activities will continue. Before we open for questions, I just want to say how proud I am of our team, what we have accomplished. We, along with the other city departments, have spent a tremendous amount of man-hours to make sure we are in and we continue to stay in compliance. The reporting requirements are quite extensive, and I especially want to thank all of those involved in their continued hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and your team for the presentation tonight. I appreciate you having the PowerPoint for the folks at home and the viewers that want to watch us later on. I'd like to, I'm going to open this up to councilors. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris. You have the floor.
I didn't think to actually speak till I saw some of the photos. And I'm not, I'm not, by no means am I trying to knock you off guard, because I know probably you don't have the answers. And I'll probably ask the city for some answers. But I'm glad to see you're feeling better. I know that you ate something bad yesterday, Al, right? Don't think I'm not gonna, yeah, all right. So, so talking about bad, where am I going to begin with this? Can we move back with the photos that actually triggered this? Because I've been putting together, you know, and I'm, I'm not an expert, like the last time I spoke, I'm not an expert about certain things, and I'm not, certainly not an expert of, okay, that's a good one. One more, one more, one more, another one, one more, one more, another one. That's, okay, and one more. Okay, go the other way. That's good, that's good. So that's Bayside Road, right, in Squanum. Right, so can we go to the next one? All right, and yeah, that pipe, that pipe there is along Bayside Road that I'm seeing right there, correct? Let's go to the next one. All right. Now, the picture on the right, there's the the big sewer thing. What's that road that's that's right there, right across the water?
It's the road that's
Yeah, you see the road right there? See right there? What's that?
Sure.
No, go back, go, no, no, don't, right there. No, go, go back, see right there, see this? What's that road right there?
That is, that is not the road. That, that is the sewer, just I
No, yeah, yeah, no, 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 right there. See where the trees are over there, the green?
On the other side.
What's that?
That's going to be the road out to the island.
That's Moon Island Road. All right, that's Moon Island Road. It leads out to Moon Island. So here's where my, my, my whole point is. My concern is, so, don't, don't even, don't, it's, now I'm not fooling, right, Al? Right, I'm not fooling around. So on Moon Island, my question to the city is, is Moon Island Boston, but it's falls underneath jurisdiction, correct? Just like my, your house and my house in in Squanum, right? They, they use, do they use sewer or do they use septic systems?
On Moon Island?
Mm-hmm. I know, I know the answer. I wouldn't, sometimes I know enough not to ask a question if I don't know the answer, and that happens at work, I got taught that. But they use septic systems and and they get cleared out, and it would fall under the city of Quincy to monitor that like any other septic system. Am I correct? Am I saying something that's not true? Now, do we have any record of having ever checked any of these septic systems? And this is just the beginning of my nonsense that's coming at you, but it's not nonsense. It's stuff that I've been, yeah, go ahead, go for it. I love this.
So you, you are correct.
Ian, you're going to be proud of me, I know you are.
The Health Department does have an inspector for septic systems. Going to use round numbers, but the city probably has about twenty septic systems within it. In our cemeteries, for example, the buildings and cemeteries are on septic systems.
Let's talk about Moon Island.
Moon Island is an example, so the city's Health Department does have a septic inspection program.
They do.
They do.
That's, that's good to hear because, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna, I'm not even going to talk about the rhetoric, about things that had been seen with with those trucks, the vats that come out, and and some of the septic companies, they do have these magic, and you've seen it, magic buttons that as they're leaving, they unleash their, their, their whatever out there. But so let's, let's go back to what about, well, we have no control over anything, but so we're saying that we have really, really, because I've asked this question, I didn't get the answer. That's why I'm asking it, and I thought that, you know, that it didn't exist. But have we asked the EPA, and I guess with the legal department, have we asked the EPA whether or not that, did we question whether or not Boston brought Bosnian into, Boston into this? Whether or not the EPA, to the EPA, that we have Thompson Island, we have, which has for years old, they've had the Outwood Bound School there, a high school. Any of the discharge from, whether it be older, like for instance, Squanum, the vats that go out, has, has the city of Quincy looked into that? Have we been able to go out there and inspect it? Because I know the road that's falling in with the asphalt and we with the asphalt, and we talked about this, that's going into the water, and you know what is in asphalt, would bring up a bacteria level beyond, you know, and there's a road there that we don't even inspect?
City of Boston is already under a consent decree with the EPA. If you read a lot of the headlines, the city of Boston has a combined sewer stormwater drain system where they actually dump raw sewage into Boston Harbor. That's a fact. You'll read in the newspaper. They are working supposedly to fix, to change their whole system, but that happens. Now, does some of that end up in Quincy? We don't know.
What about Spectacle Island? Spectacle Island actually has a restaurant out there. They have a museum out there. They have thousands and thousands of people that go out there. Have we, have we looked into this with, in our fight with?
It was part of our argument, but Mr. Timmons may be able to talk to that.
Also have Solicitor Timmons. He's going to come to the mic and answer, hopefully he can answer some of these questions. You have the floor. Go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. In response to your questions, no, Quincy didn't do any of that. Because what was at issue was our stormwater outfalls along our coastline. That was just the dispute we had with EPA. As I'm sure you're aware, all the islands you just ticked off, they're part of the vast Boston Harbor. And we did bring up conversationally during the discussions, the fact that if something happens in Waymouth, it's going to wash northward according to the tides. And we talked about tidal flows. And the focus of this was solely on ending what was going on at Quincy outfalls. Boston is involved in very aggressive programs with the EPA. I have a list of other communities. Revere was involved in a similar consent decree, because they have issues with overflows that end up in the waters of the United States. But what the EPA's been doing, Counselor, is trying to have each community address its independent outfalls, as opposed to us trying to determine who's making the contributions to the greater Boston Harbor issues, which are vast and subject to tidal flow.
Sure. Jim, did, did any of these other, Revere, any of these other cities get fined, like we did?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It just didn't, it just really didn't make the headlines, as like us did.
We had analyzed all that. And coming to a consent decree on the fine involved here, we submitted a number of fines from other communities.
Right.
Some similarly situated, and those that weren't similarly situated, like, you know, they've, we've got Malden, Revere from around here, but the city of Fitchburg, which one would think does not influence waters of the United States.
But it does.
They had issues as well. And while I'm not exactly familiar with what body of water was implicated, you know, they paid a substantial fine. So, yes, we went through the fine schedule and looked at all that, and that was heavily negotiated as Commissioner
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, if, we got, we got, we got that big headlines. And I think that, especially folks that we represent, that we felt, they felt that we were like the worst of the worst, and we probably weren't.
Well, they didn't, that, that wasn't
Well, what I'm saying is, my opinion is that, especially even in Quincy, wow, we, we're the worst of the worst. That's how the, that's how the papers made it. And I can quote, I mean, it just happened to be lucky that it fell right. And one of the reasons why is, of course, Moon Island leads out to the, where the bridge would be built. And, and why my, my dandruff is up about it is because the smugness of a former mayor of the city of Boston during the St. Patrick's Day breakfast, the day, it happened, it happened, I think it was the Friday before the St. Patrick's Day breakfast. And I wrote the quote down as best I could. Did you, did you hear about what, what's, what happened over in Quincy? And now, he's, he's got the whole, you know, and whole Boston, New England cable network watching this, 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 this breakfast, which has always been very popular, say, "I'm not surprised with all the crap the city of Quincy has thrown at me about the, about the Long Island Bridge. Some of it had to stick. And I thought it was very smug. It really had my dandruff up that day when I heard it. We had just gotten fined that huge amount of money." And you talk about taking it personally. Sure, I, I did, because, you know, the folks I represent, that, all they're hearing about is how much, whether it's how much money we're spending, how much our taxes are going up, or how much we're getting fined because we're not doing the right thing. We heard tonight, all the right things that we're being, have, we've all done. Now, I was just, I just, I brought this up because I wanted to make sure that we have done everything we can as far as, especially, and I know we really, really haven't, when it comes to the conservation, and that's another story for another day. The Conservation Committee with, when they want to repair a road that needs to be repaired, that's literally, that road, there's a stretch somewhere in there that is about, it's, it's almost in the, it's almost in the water. And it's all asphalt, it's all tar. We showed another, there was another picture of, of a pipe that was exposed. I have all these pictures that were done by a drone that, that I have. And I was going to present something, and I just want to make sure that we're going to do our due diligence to hold other people accountable, or at least bring it up to the EPA, who, you know, these outside agencies that I'm dealing with, that my community's dealing with, the FCC, with, with the cell tower I brought up here. The, I was going to present something about that road, and that's obviously the EPA that we're dealing with. We have these outside agencies that, we talk about the compressor station. We have outside agencies that just do what they want or allow to have happen with no consideration of the people that we represent. And that's kind of why I, I got my, but you know what really got my attention when you mentioned the grease pot? Think about the grease pot, the stuff that poured out of there from Boston, right, Al? Anybody who sees that, that, that from the road, I've talked to folks that would talk about, old timers would talk about, they'd be out there swimming, and all of a sudden, they had, they could hear the grease pot was in excess. And anybody who's driven into Squanum, into, out that way, out by, to head to Moon Island, it would shoot up, and, and everything would just go into the water. And this is where people swam, people. So you think about, you got to be happy with the EPA, because we've changed how things are doing and protecting people. But I was really upset when we, when we got hit with that, that, and I understand the different aspects of the, the flow of the water and what we got, what we really got, we got fined with. But I still think that there's outside, outside things that, that have probably caused this.
Understood. Just like to emphasize, this was a consent decree. It's something that the parties agreed to. The negotiation with DEP started in 2016. Commissioner Armandi was running the show at DPW back at the time when all of this started. Because we couldn't reach agreement, because Quincy was pushing back in the manner you're talking about, they wanted a quarter of a million dollar fine. And, and it's actually, it's technically, and this is, now I'm going to be a lawyer here, all right? And it's technically not a fine. It's what they call a civil penalty. And the reason for that is, is this is a strict liability statute. And what that means is, whenever something happens, when we have a, a big storm and sewage which has leached into the stormwater system, gets pushed out into, well, Austin Harbor, that's strict liability. We don't intend for that to happen. We're a municipality that for years has been using money to pay teachers and fire and do the public works, obligations that we have. And that's how this all happened, that the system fell into disrepair. But it's a civil penalty because these things were happening. So that was substantially negotiated down, and in large measure, because this particular team, along with one of the city's engineers, was able to bring forward our capital plan. You may recall the capital plan that the council approved three or four years ago. Because we had that plan in place, and there was money that was programmed, that's when EPA came to the table and really resolved things with us.
Right. And you mentioned, what you kind of mentioned sparked this, this, a pipe that runs, a pipe that runs further than the Cedar Grove Cemetery, that comes out at, right next to this, I believe it's the Squanum Yard Club. I get them mixed up. I don't know why. But that comes out. So in the summertime, here's a story. In the summertime, when you've had, in August, you've had a, a dry spell throughout the area of, say, heat wave, 10, 10, 12, whatever it's, how many days it is that, and then all of a sudden, you have a thunderstorm where there's a torrential downfall. There's that pipe that you have to be so careful for, and, and everybody would warn you. And, and if you drive along Quincy Shore Drive, look out into the harbor, you can see that there's a, there's a, like a cement, it looks like there was like a walkway. But right there, there's a pipe. And if you're, if you were on the water even after the storm stopped, all of a sudden, everything from, from all the way to Dorchester and Milton would flow through and go into our water. And I don't think a lot of people know about that, but that's, and it would happen only because it was such a dry spell. And all the sewer, all the sewers would not have a flow of water. Anything that was in the sewers and in the storm basins would come out right where we were and right where we're being fined for. So I'm a layman. I'm not, I'm just bringing stories of where, who, where I represent and who I represent. And, and, you know, I don't think I, I think I broke the five-minute rule, didn't I? I'm sorry about, I think that's the first time I did, right? So, other than that.
It's an important matter.
Other than that, that's all I have to say. Oh, yeah, I saw you just did. That's all I have to say about the war in, in North Quincy and Squanum, okay?
All right.
All right. Thanks very much. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, guys. It was a good presentation.
Okay, Counselor? Counselor Liang, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I actually, Councilor Harris, I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it segues well into, I think, really brief questions that I have tonight. And it's about, you know, folks, I think, speaking about accountability, right, folks, I think trust that services are happening in the city, whether we see or hear about them, right? And particularly when it comes to this. I do have faith in it, because, again, like I've mentioned quite a number of times to you, Commissioner, I've had the opportunity, even prior to, you know, 2016 with this report from EPA, to go into the office and see the hard work that all of you were doing with tracking, basically doing a full review citywide of our sewer systems and the pipes, and, you know, rating them, and then using all of that information, which takes quite a long time, right? And it's exceptionally detailed, but it's really important, because then it produces, I think, a really solid plan on how we're going to address such a large issue with such old pipes across this entire city. And so I really commend you on that work. And again, I have faith in that system and that the work is ongoing, because I've seen all the work you've done to, to make it possible. And I'm just going to ask the same question I always ask, right? And that's, how do we connect that information and resources that the work is happening to residents, right? On one of the pages here on the PowerPoint slides, I think it was page 35, there is the sanitary sewer overflows, where residents can go to the city's website. They were emailed, it says here, to all subscribers. Notifications are sent to the Quincy Sun and to Sam Pan. Thank you for that, by the way. And updates and reports are accessible there. That's great. But that's specifically the sanitary sewer overflow. So when it comes to the reporting and tracking of any other issues, when it comes to, you know, flooding issues, or what happens with the drainage, right? Like, is there a way that we can also put that online for folks to access? And let's say, you know, for example, we have a heavy rainfall, and they said that one of the drains are backed up, right? Is there somewhere where they can go onto a website like this one for sanitary sewer flow and see, you know, hey, did somebody already report this? And if so, what's the status report? When is it going to be updated and fixed? So on and so forth. Basically, I, I know the work you all are doing behind the scenes. I would love to connect that to the residents, right? So that they can see the progress. They can report things themselves. And, you know, find out information without having to inundate you with phone calls.
I could have Steve address some of the things he's working on, too.
Absolutely. So the short answer to your question is yes, absolutely. More information can be made available to the public and the constituents. I think with coordination through city IT, through the staff that manages, I believe it's called INOVISE, our constituent feedback program, and of course, the GIS staff in the city, we could certainly leverage this data, expose it publicly safely in a near-real-time capacity, and better inform the constituents of what's happening in near-real time. The foundation that's been prepared with enterprise-class database, the version control, the security that's been implemented, and the support we get from IT, I think it's really just about proper planning, consideration, and execution. It's not so much, can we do this? The answer is absolutely yes. It's just, what's the best way to deploy that type of resource? So, yes, we can.
Yeah. Again, I'm even, thank you. I, just looking back to the information on page 33, it's a sewer rehab historic tracking web app, right? 2023 planned, 2022 ongoing, again, so on. There's, you all put so much work into gathering this data, and again, using it to inform very necessary improvements across the city. I, I just want residents to be able to see that as well and access that, and really be a part of this process as we move forward. So whatever we can do to get it up and running sooner rather than later, I have been asking for it for quite some time. It's great to see that it does exist. And so let's just find, like you said, a safe way to make that publicly accessible. But it would be a priority of mine, so I'm asking you, if you can, to take a look at that and see what we can do to make it accessible.
Heard loud and clear. Thank you.
No, thank you for your work. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I, I do appreciate it. And I do have a couple of questions. And I'm going to start with the presentation, then I might back up to a few things. So one of the things that we say, or one of the things in the decree, actually, I'm going to go the decree. In the decree, it says that, you know, one of the things that it says is that you have to make sure all of, anybody who works in the city of Quincy, anybody that were contracting, anybody that, I think you mentioned this, anybody that is doing any projects in the city of Quincy, they all have to get this document to understand what their, their responsibilities are. And then that's being reviewed by the DPW. Is that correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I understood it. So that's just, and that's just our contractors. But if we have, like, large developments that are happening in the downtown, just curious, like, in the downtown, is that the same process? Does that go through? Who's reviewing those types of things? Or is that something that's separate because we're doing the downtown infrastructure?
Sure. Anything on sewage or stormwater gets reviewed by the city engineering department.
Okay. So, so any, so when we talk about the downtown, one of the things that's unique about the downtown as opposed to other developments that are happening, maybe, like West Quincy has a couple of big developments that are going to be happening. But that's because in the downtown, it's, it's funded through a diff, and that infrastructure is being done by hired contractors through the city. So that infrastructure that we might be working on, if there's any sewer lines or anything that we're doing, that's being all managed through the script, right? The DPW.
The, the, yes.
I just, I guess the reason why I'm asking that is that we have miles and miles and miles of, as you identified, miles and miles and miles of, of, of lines, both sewer and, 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 I'm going to forget the other part that you said, but basically, both input and output, how about that? And then we have, you know, everybody gets these at home where they're saying, like, hey, do you want to take out this extra insurance in case your sewer line, because you're responsible from the line to your house, and the city's responsible from the line to the street, correct? So do we keep track of how many, you know, homes that might be having those kind of problems? Because I know there have been people throughout my course of time up here that have had some catastrophic issues in their homes. So do we keep track of that, too, and make note of that?
We do.
And are those?
Anytime there's a sewer backup or anything, that's all, that's all tracked.
Okay.
And we, we actually put, we go, you know, kind of above and beyond, we'll go back in a year's time and go back to that house, and we'll check, maybe do a cleaning of the laterals. We'll check their lines. We'll camera visit for them. That's just something we do that we don't have to, but we do it.
Yeah. Do we ever see any disproportionate kind of areas and neighborhoods that you might have sewer backups that might, that you might be looking at through the GIS to also say, this is an identified area that we have to check? Or is it just, is it isolated usually?
It's isolated, Joe. Do you want to talk about, I mean, we have areas in the city where
I would imagine you have lots of areas in the city.
You know, because of the bogs and places in Montclair that, yeah.
Commissioner, we have an area that we had to really get into rigorous debate with over the Commissioner, we have an area that we had to really get into rigorous debate with over the DP, and that, that's the bog in Ward Three.
Is the what, sorry?
The bog in Ward Three.
Ward Three, yeah, okay.
Very flat neighborhood, very flat pipes, not a lot of pitch, needs a lot of operation and maintenance, yet it's more than two-hundred feet away from the coast. It's nowhere near Wallaston Beach. Why are you over there? And that's a flagship example of us managing the whole city.
Right.
Not just some of our flagship-
Who's saying why you're over there? The EPA's saying why are you over there? Are you saying why is EPA over there looking at?
One of the EPA's, you know, initial forays was, we really need to focus on Wallaston Beach and those beaches, not the areas well inland.
Okay, so they were questioning why you were over in this low-lying area because it wasn't near the water.
Correct. We knew areas such as the Ward Three bog and all of those really flat streets, they've got pipes that are old, they've got pipes that have settled and pipes that need constant attention, returning year after year to make sure that they haven't silted up or that fat soils and grease haven't blocked them up.
That's why I'm asking that question, because obviously, we have a huge city and we, I know this, I know from my short period of time being up here, many of the phone calls you get, usually in a panic situation, is something that does happen. And it seems to, it doesn't, I couldn't tell you if it's disproportionate because I don't get enough of those, but I'm going to imagine you get far more than any of us would get for those types of phone calls. And the city has been great when it comes to that, but obviously, there's some problems there. And I was just asking, Mr. Fatsy, it's like, when major development projects come into the city, do we ever, do we have to ever modify any of the projects, any of the things that we're doing to make sure that we're managing any of the potential, like, I'm assuming that there's a, I think you said there's a five, ten, fifteen-year plan for this type of stuff, Al? And when you're looking across the city, you might have a project, a major development comes in, and that's in an area that, that we might need to have worked on? Are we working with those developers that are coming in to mitigate any of those problems?
Yeah, I'll just respond quickly. One of our engineers, Chen Sang, reviews all those projects, he's, he's incredible. And he really holds the developer's feet to the fire. He's strict, he's good, and as Jim Fatsys would, would back me up on this. So Chen reviews all of those, he's tremendous. So, yeah, we're on top of all, any, any development that comes in.
Because as we're talking about this, and you're talking about throughout the whole city, that's just one piece of what you're doing, but then we have a lot of stuff that's happening throughout our whole city, and I, and I know we were talking, I'm going to get to the GIS, too, we're talking about how it's multidisciplined and we're using it throughout different departments. I think it's really key that as we're working through these projects, and we might have these things that are coming up, that we're maximizing our opportunities to make sure that we're, you know, not only are we using the grant money or any monies that we can, we should be using COVID money. I'm not a hundred percent positive how much COVID money. I would love to know if we used any COVID money for any of the sewer and rehab that we've done, but it's important that, that we also use any kind of development money, meaning mitigation money for any of the projects that we're doing as well. So, that's going to lead me into the GIS. So, this was a great presentation with the GIS, too, so I don't think that gets highlighted enough because it is, we see it in the budget, we see how it's proportioned out throughout the budget. So, can I ask, is it Steven? Do you work for the city, or?
I do, I work for the city out of the engineering department.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to make sure I identified, so you mentioned that it's Microsoft SQL Server that you're using, and you're using Enterprise GIS for the city. How long have we been able to run these reports? Are these something that we've been doing just recently? Or is, I know you've been able to run a lot of reports, but are you, are they, are some of these things relatively new? Where we're, you know, we're, we're using mobile apps and we're doing those types of things? Are those relatively new, or have we been doing those for a while?
I would say in some cases, the city has historically used these solutions in limited capacity, and in the two and a half years that I've been involved, it's been effectively the entirety of my focus to further-
So you were brought on particularly to hopefully bring this, maybe get more use out of the GIS, I hope.
I'm not sure it was explained that way at the onset of my engagement, but I believe you may be on to something.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm going to, you know, usually I'm much tougher, Steven, so you should be very happy that I'm saying it like that. So, the reason why I bring that up is, you know, I, I could be wrong, but I think, I think it's a, you're a great asset to the city of Quincy, so, because this is an important thing that we can have where we can actually track these things. And when I'm seeing all of this stuff, this is, this is a, it could be, it could be part of the reason, you know, from this, I have no idea. It could be the EPA lawsuit that came in, that we, you know you're doing the work, I don't know where Alice, you know you're doing the work, but you may not be able to produce the reports to the EPA to be able to show you're doing the work, and therefore, you're not getting credit for the work. I don't know if anybody wants to jump in and tell me if any of that could potentially be the fact, but I, I know that you're, I know you're hard at work doing this stuff, but, but at the same time, we, we, it looks like we're now potentially being able to show the work we're doing. And not only that, but as you're doing the cleaning the basins, the money that's being appropriated for the work that we're doing, we're able to identify some of the areas that we're having potential problems in. I mean, this is the benefit of the GIS, this is the benefit of being able to cross-use our tools and to be able to see the things that we're doing, and this is a positive thing for the city of Quincy. And I know you've been doing it for the last couple of years, but I know you've been doing this work going back since 2010. So I think, was that potentially some of the problems that we're able, we were having, not being able to show that to the EPA potentially, or?
No, I think, I think we showed the EPA a lot of, like I said, eighteen binders' worth of work.
Oh, yeah.
Part of that, as we get back, we talked about the bog. We had done tremendous amount of work in that area, and they weren't giving us credit for that. They, they were trying to strictly stay within that two-hundred feet of Wallaston Beach, the beach buffer zones. And I think we somewhat convinced them during the process that all the work we had done. As far as the GIS, it is part of our reporting, it's a requirement. We report to them every six months. We've had three reports so far.
Is that part of the decrees, the last, part of the decree is, is the, so, I guess that's my point? So part of the decree is-
As far as the GIS, that's, we'd love to come up and do a demonstration just on GIS for the city, all the work we're doing with the park department, with planning, with assessors' office, with TPAL, mapping trees, mapping signage, doing all that. Steve's doing, it's not just related to this EPA consent decree. We're doing a tremendous amount of work, and I love-
I'm not trying to belittle what you're doing, Steve, I'm just trying to say that's great to see the interconnectivity, I think that's actually a positive, so.
It's a great story, and we'd love to give a presentation on that sometime.
I'd be happy for you to do the presentation with that. I think this, I think just showing this, but also the potential of knowing that those, and I know you said those reports are on your, on the DPW, and if we want to, we can go kind of dive deep. I think it would be great if you could pull them up a little closer, though, because I know you had to dive pretty deep to get the, to get the decree. So, like, that's a, that's kind of lost on the, on the site, and, you know, it's just, it's good information for people to see. I realize that we were in the news for this, but I guess I'm going to go back to this because I realize, and I, I understand what Solicitor Timmons was saying, that this is an agree for the city of Quincy, and we negotiated down to a hundred and fifteen-thousand-dollar penalty. Have we paid that, do we know?
I believe so, but I don't, I don't know the mechanism.
Okay. So one of the things that's missing from your presentation, Al, and I gave you a big A-plus when you came up, is the departments that came up to show us what you were doing, is we're not really seeing the budgetary plans for all of the presentation that you've given here. And I know that the, in the dissent decree, that it basically said that we're going to have to pay a hundred and fifteen-thousand-dollar penalty, that was what the city agreed to, and spend a hundred million dollars improving stormwater and sewer systems in federal, the federal lawsuit. That was what was reported in the paper. You did mention a lot of the things, how much, like a million dollars a year since 2010, sixty-seven million dollars of it's being spent. You mentioned the different places that we potentially have grants, but what we're not seeing is the budget of the work that was done, and then also potentially, the next five or ten years, what's being budgeted, what projects are being done, what the estimated costs are going to be. I think, I think-
We generally spend between five, we've been spending between five and six million a year on these projects.
I understand, yeah.
And that's, plan to continue that. You know, if you, most of the money has been through the MWRA and SRF funds. We've, you know, I can get you a breakdown by year, what we spent.
I guess, I know that in these particular cases with the EPA, we have, they kind of have, and I haven't been able to go through this, I, I reached out to Mr. Walker today. I think, I don't know if I'd read it before, but I know I hadn't seen it recently, and I was just trying to look back, because usually they give kind of like a, a year-to-year kind of, like, the, what they're hoping that will get accomplished, and I think we get to determine what we're going to do to pick and choose, but we can go back and negotiate those things, too. And if I'm wrong, anybody who wants to correct me can. I'm looking, you don't know to correct me. But, but the reason why I bring that up is that, again, we don't, as, as a city, one of our responsibilities up here is to know, you know, what we're spending. This isn't an annual budget, this isn't what we're going to be approving for our general budget. This is going to be something that we're, we're going to be, we're appropriations, and I'm curious to know, will there be appropriations that's going to be coming before us for future work that needs to be done? As a council, that's what we would be doing. And then also, you know, when we identify the potential places that we could get the money, that's great as well, but I'd also look to find out as, you know, you know, not only are we looking for the revolving loan, loan programs and sewer bonds, but also any COVID money that's been invested in that, because that is one of the largest assets that we have that was given to us, is gift from the federal government as well, that we can use it for storm and water issues. I'm not sure how much we have, or if off the top of your head, you could tell me how much we've used or identified for, using for this?
No, we haven't, we've strictly, I mean, this body here has already appropriated monies through fiscal year twenty-three, through SRF and MWRA money. The state, the SRF funds just awarded us another ten million dollars for these projects going into fiscal twenty-four. So, state's been fantastic. I think we've only had one, one actual bond authorization through the enterprise fund.
Again, it would be great if, it's, it's the only thing that's missing from your presentation is the itemization of your, of the budget for this. A hundred million dollars was identified in the, in the, in the, in the agreement, the dissent, the agreement, a hundred and fifteen-thousand-dollar fine, that penalty that we were going to pay. And if we could just have that, and it can come as a separate asset, or you can come back and present it to us, that's really the piece that's missing, is not just the money that was approved by us, the money that we've got from grants, but just how we plan on being able to meet that hundred-million-dollar spend. And again, I'm just going to keep repeating it over and over again until I'm blue in the face. COVID money was something that we could use for this, that wouldn't cost our taxpayers a dime because it was something that we, that was identified, and it should have been used for any of this work. And I know we're getting some money from the state, but that could have gone a long way to be able to get those things done as well. But I do want to thank you for the presentation, and particularly, I want to thank you for, for bringing Steven on board because I do think that what I'm seeing there is a very positive piece, and I see it only as something that's going to grow, to be able to show real reports of what's happening throughout the city. And then also, when we get those phone calls potentially for somebody that might be having that sewerage backup in their homes, you'll be able to show those reports and be able to identify those things, and be able to be much more proactive in being able to bring that to us and show us what the needs are. Not that we don't believe that there are needs throughout our city, we realize this is an old city with old, old, old lines. Old is not always bad, but old is definitely a challenge. One of the things that I, that I feel that we should be more focused on, and maybe the EPA should be, too, is maybe that berm that's over a hundred years old. I think that might need some lining to go into it, because that does go through our city and it services over twenty-three towns that goes through it. And if that ever hap, anything bad ever happens to that, then we have bigger problems than a hundred and fifteen-thousand-dollar penalty fee. That's not something that we take care of, that's something that the state does, but I think it's something that we should be proactively pushing on. I'm not sure if we do, but it's something that concerns me terribly because that's a whole area, it's the whole city that will be affected by that, and Boston, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel. I'd like to recognize Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to ask a couple sort of fundamental questions about the circumstances that we're in. Kind of how did we, how did we get here? So, the laws apparently that the EPA enforces, where did those come from? Is this like Clean Water Act that enacted these rules that the EPA then investigates? Simply, yeah, so then-
I mean, I have my own opinion of it, but, you know, it just seems like the major cities have all been hit with some kind of a consent decree at some point.
Okay, no, that's kind of where I'm going, because I'm, this situation immediately made me think of the awful situation that we've been put in by FEMA in the flood maps and insurance and changing of, of everything to people who live in coastal properties. And it's sort of, I'm just getting this feeling like it's, it's government rent extraction, you know, from a different level. And so, you know, I appreciate the presentation overall. I don't doubt any of the work that you consultants, anyone does, because we see it on a regular basis. But from, you know, a perspective of a municipality and the city council watching this take place, this is kind of egregious for the federal government to be infringing on, you know, local cities and towns and rent-seeking, taking more money from them, you know, for, for situations that we're already working to improve on a regular basis. So, you know, I appreciate the example and the illustration of, of all the work that you've done in trying to prove that, and get credit for other areas, which unfortunately didn't count. I guess, the, the missing, you said the state's been good in helping us to sort of finance some of these projects, but where were they? I mean, they maintain the beach, so why are we fronting the burden financially for this?
That was one of our arguments that, you know, we don't own Wallaston Beach, but we do, our pipes go into Wallaston Beach, so that was, and Jim could probably talk to that, talk to that argument a little, sure.
That was an issue that was hotly debated, and what happened was, at a certain point, we uncovered the fact that some of the outfall pipes that went into the Wallaston Beach area were actually owned by the Commonwealth. And so then we segregated out the ones that were ours. So we, we're only paying for or charged with repairing the ones that are owned by the city of Quincy. So, we did distinguish, distinguish between the two. That's a good point.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks, Jim. And so then, I guess, like, in, in the same vein, are there, is there politics involved in this at all? You know, in terms of the ability for our state and federal delegation to aid in, you know, we're directly liaising with the EPA and the federal government, but is there any intervention, you know, possible with our representatives in government?
I would turn that over to Mr. Walker to answer that question.
Through you, Mr. President. To some extent, Counsel, yes, Counsel Lynch, Congressman Lynch, excuse me, was, was heavily involved as we went through the process with EPA and the DOJ during this, but there's a limit to what ability a congressman has. His role fell largely on the EPA, and he did a good job, sort of, working as a liaison for the city and, and sort of highlighting all the stuff that we have been doing. But there comes a point in time where the folks at EPA just, they, they put a line, not a line in the sand, but a line down, said, well, this is what it is, there's a Clean Water Act violation, you're in, technically, despite of all this other stuff going on, you're technically not in compliance. You know, either agree to a consent decree, or we'll fight this out in court. And I think if everyone remembers, it was the mayor's initial thought to show all of this in court and prove that what the EPA was doing was, was a little bit overboard in the city of Quincy, that just because it was our turn, quote-unquote, as Al and both, and City Solicitor Timmons mentioned, other cities, virtually every coastal city in the Commonwealth has been subject to a consent decree of, of this kind. The mayor said, we've got twelve years, ten years of evidence showing that we can, we've done the right thing. They got us on one incident or something like that, I don't want to get too deep into it, you know, why don't we fight it? And we brought in a very excellent environmental law firm working together with Solicitor Timmons to work through this process. And everyone, the consensus was, we fought a good fight, we're now working together with EPA, we're better off coming to an agreement with them than taking this to court, and who knows what happens with court? The, the fine could have been a lot more, the, the end game could have been a lot more in terms of how much they wanted to make us, make us spend on a yearly basis. It could have been, to some degree, problematic. So at that point, you know, there was consensus that we should just enter into the consent decree, but never acknowledging that, like, this was a systemic failure of our system, because it wasn't. This was not some, and I know when the stories come out in the press and, you know, with the way that was released by, even by the EPA, it, it sort of looks like this was, you know, nineteen-seventies Boston Harbor, nineteen-sixties Boston Harbor, that, you know, we were literally backing trucks up to the ocean and just, and just dumping stuff in, and that, that wasn't the case. And, but we're in a good place now, and we're, we're doing what we can going forward, and the congressman, like I said, has been, has been helpful as, as he can, but, you know, these, these agencies of the federal government, they, they aren't beholden, you know, entirely to, to members of Congress.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, I just want to also say that, and I want to give credit to, during the deposition process with the Department of Justice, I think their eyes were opened to what the city was doing. City Engineer Paul Costello was phenomenal, Joe Shea was phenomenal. Mr. Timmons, they, they opened the eyes of the DOJ with the, I think the DOJ said, you know, it's better to settle this thing. EPA originally, again, like we said, they wanted to basically make us spend 200 million dollars over 10 years. Tell us what to do. And after that whole process, they came back and they were willing to negotiate, and we negotiated that down. And I think there should be tremendous credit given to our team because they really, I think they did a phenomenal job showing our case, showing what we had done. Very proud of them.
And even in, and not having, I didn't read the consent decree, but not having read it and understanding that we still do have a, a significant allotment of money to spend, are there specific pathways that, that those funds need to be spent? You know, are there, is it either particular work, vendors, et cetera, where the money needs to go?
Particular work. I mean, we, again, what we, what we had been doing, you know, we're, we're investigating our lines, we investigate our drains, our sewers, we're lining all our sewers, we're replacing our sewer lines, we're doing all our wet weather, dry weather testing, we're looking at all of our outfalls now, a number of them need repairs, that's on our list to do. So, it's a, it's not just a one-year process. We, we're planning this down several years, and we know how much to spend each year.
And then it's essentially a smaller amount of money from a fine perspective that needs to be paid to the EPA directly?
That, yes, and I, I believe that's been paid. I, I don't...
That's, yeah, that's done. Okay.
The fine, has that been paid, Jim? Civil penalty has been paid.
Got it. Okay. All right. Well, it's interesting. I just, I wanted to share that I, I don't doubt any of the work historically or going into the future. It's just that this seems an aggressive federal government tactic to, I guess, mandate and fix problems from past behaviors and practices and habits, you know, which puts probably cities that aren't in such positive financial position, cities and towns in awful places, like, you know, I don't know what's going on Revere, but, or how much they have to spend, but that doesn't seem right. So...
You're, you're right about that, and we took that position, that finding, it's not like, you know, Thomas P. or Coke is the president of the Acme Rubber Burning Factory, you know? And that it's taxpayers who pay this.
That's, that's on top of it, is that this is probably a lot of industrial waste too, over time, from different places. You talk about Pittsburgh, I'm sure that there's rivers or something that feed into outlays.
I just want to point out, there's a, a sentence here, and it says, "The city does not admit any liability to the United States arising out of the transactions or occurrences alleging the complaint." So, I just want to echo what Mr. Walker said. Like, we, to the very end, we said, "We dispute what you're saying," but as I pointed out when Counselor Harris was asking questions, this is a strict liability matter. And the mayor had already started down the path of the capital improvement plan. We had already worked with the council on it, so that's, that was the real driver in resolving this. And then I'd just also point out, we paid a fine, a civil penalty, I'm going to use that word, of 115,000. Revere, a smaller community further inland, they paid a fine of 140,000. So, you know, the, the civil penalty was calculated after long negotiations and the fact that we really had our ducks in order with that capital improvement plan.
So, essentially, this was, there was no, there was no measure preventative to believe, to make this not happen?
They were explaining to us why they do this. They have to fund these, these actions, and that's why they wouldn't let us, because the mayor was really, you know, working hard to, on the civil penalty. He made us work very hard on that. But what the gov, the federal government said is, "We, we use this money to fund, you know, issues with communities or private companies, and we need to get these civil penalties in order to keep this clean water program going." So...
Got it.
Understood. But I just want to highlight that as far as outcomes, it really was, as I think the commissioners explained, it was a good outcome. We started back with Counselor Ramondi, who, rather Commissioner Ramondi, who did a lot of the evaluation stuff. He got that all started. And then Mr. Shea and Commissioner Graziosi, so we had a terrific, you know, groundwork of evaluation, and that helped us resolve the case.
Great. All right. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Al. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to recognize Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. President. Basically, I can speak for some of this work because of the work done down at the Strand, down at the pump station there. Have we had any problems down there? Is that operating? I haven't received a single, which is usually good when people are flooded down there. I get called right away, and everything I've seen so far is it's working properly. It's great. We had no flooding issues a few weeks back when we had flooding in a lot of other parts of the city. Yeah. So, um, so kudos on that, and the, the park is moving forward, which will be a, which will not have any, which will basically, basically be a passive park and will be set up, designed to take the flow coming off the beach from, so it doesn't hit the neighborhood down there, which has been a problem. Even when I was on the council the first time, I was in hip-waders one time up to my waist walking through there, and it does get devastated on a regular basis. So, one question I have though, is I know, for example, on Dickens Street, some of the streets, we've lined the pipes. There's still a lot of, a lot of areas along that that have, that have pipes. I'm sure they're under inspection and stuff like that, but is that a program that's going to continue?
Absolutely.
Particularly with the ones along the beach?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, so you're going to continue, because I like the lining because you don't have to dig up all the pipes, and it, it sometimes is less disruptive to the neighborhood.
I think we lined somewhere around 80 roadways this year, and I think, I think our plan is to do 90 next year.
Okay. And one thing I'm also going to bring up, because it does hit my area, it hits a lot of other areas of the wood, is we didn't mention like Furnace Brook tonight. I know that wasn't part of the decree, but I know years ago, we had a lot of flooding and we did a lot of effort to clean up that, that roadway because right off of, right, it comes right through Ward 4, Ward 5, right down to the beach, even hits a good section of Ward 1, and that's a whole watershed. Are we continuing to maintain that so it doesn't, it doesn't flood so that we're watching to make sure that the, that the area is kept clean on a regular basis?
We have a major project going on right now in the West Quincy area, right by the St. Mary Cemetery area, working on the Furnace Brook. Joe, you may be able to speak to that. You've been heavily involved in that.
Thank you. And Counselor, to your point, we, we learned an awful lot in the March storms of 2010 about how Furnace Brook can back up and, and basically destroy many of the neighborhoods along the way. So, there's been a revised maintenance program in place for well over a decade that, excuse me, that DPW runs to ensure that the systems don't silt up, back up, trees fall in. And then in addition to that, there's been a string of capital projects. The one the commissioner just mentioned is the Furnace Brook Enhancement Project, which will widen Furnace Brook and make flood storage on the Furnace Brook side of St. Mary's and Hall Cemetery between Cross and Quarry. Now, you'll see the trees have been marked, and that's going to get underway for this exact reason, to make sure that we're storing the flood where people don't live, making sure that the streets don't inundate, sewers don't overflow.
Because I think it's critical to understand that that is also, when we're talking about flooding and drainage, that that is also an important watershed that affects Ward 4, but Ward 5 is right down, down the pipe, and it has resulted in large-scale flooding over the years. So, that that is still part of the program.
City, the DPW and the engineering department is currently working on an inundation model citywide for all flooding, and it's pretty impressive. I think at some point, would love to come in here and give a presentation tied in with, Steve's been working on that with City Engineer Paul Costello, and it's, it's modeling for the whole city on, on just those type of issues you're talking about, Chuck.
Yeah, I think that would be important because those are areas, I know that we're on flooding and the EPA study, but it, it's all a watershed. Like you said correctly, it all, it all affects. And what, what is happening in Ward 4 then also affects Ward 5, affects Ward 1, it's a whole, it's a whole watershed going down there. And so, I'll move off of that, but also, a couple of questions on the, the tide gates in Black's Creek. I know it's been up and down and, and going that way, but I think it's managing that, which you have done a very good job and everything, is making sure, just to make sure that everyone's still marking when the gates are open, when they're down. That's still part of your program, I would assume.
Absolute part of our program, and that's, unfortunately, our friends at the EPA have denied every application for tide gates. They don't believe in tide gates. We have one federal agency, the FEMA, that says we'll give you grant money for tide gates. Another federal agency at the EPA says we are against tide gates. So, it's crazy.
Okay. I, I think it's important that we still maintain them. I know those have been there since the 70s, and I would hope, so there's no movement on that at all?
No movement. Joe, any? There's no good news.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like you to keep working on it because it isn't...
We're still, with, with, there's other locations in the city, the Sagamore Creek, we've been trying to work on tide gates, and like I say, the EPA just does not believe in tide gates.
Okay. Because I know also, when those tide, those tide gates do need to be closed, the people will get flooded. We had some incidents that happened where the tide gates weren't open. There was, there was a 12-foot tide, and people along that area got flooded, so...
We have a strict protocol. We, on the tides, when the tide gets above a certain height, we, we make sure the tide gates are closed. Unfortunately, when you close them, the creek dries out and we don't get enough, we don't get water into the marshes. So, that's, that's one of the issues with our, when we had proposed the, for the federal agencies for permitting, it was to put tide gates in that we could regulate, that you don't have to close them all the way, you don't have to open them all the way, you could regulate, so those marshes are constantly getting the saltwater they need.
Okay. So, that's basically with the EPA. So, I guess we're going to have to keep working on that. Okay. Great presentation. Love to see the GIS. I remember when the GIS was in its infant stage, I was part of it, and it was, it was basically me, Dominic, and Nancy Gavazza trying to keep everything together. So, I'm so glad I, I proposed having a GIS department in the city from the day, from back to the 1990s. So, I'm really excited to see it in there and see the work that's coming out of your department. And the vision was that it should be used for every, all the departments and all the work you've done with the other departments and everything like that. So, I couldn't be happier to see that. I, I, and I think what it gives to the residents. I don't know if anything on the tide gates could eventually be added on to the GIS, so you know when they're open and when they're closed, and something that residents could, could have access to, just so I know sometimes I have to call you guys to get this stuff, and that way it would, would eliminate those calls. And people are fearful. Some of it's for environmental reasons, some of it's for getting flooded, but I think if some of that could also be added on, I think it would be very helpful. Thank you, Commissioner. Great job.
Okay, Counselor. I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
Mr. President, I think my colleague's asking nearly every question there is, but I still somehow managed to come up with one or two. We filed five compliance reports so far dating back to September 2021 with the EPA. I'm just curious of the process of how that works. Does the EPA sign off on those compliance reports, or are they just kind of getting them and putting them in a drawer and never looking at them?
They'll give us a, a yea or nay if there are any issues within those reports that we have to fix or correct. So far, so good. Right?
Yeah. Good to hear. I was just curious because obviously, you know, just like you, we don't want to be hit with another, is it civil penalty is what we're calling it, moving forward with that? Another question I had was on pages 5 and 6, where we go to sewer system areas and then drainage system catchments. Honestly, I was just curious what the different colors within the areas of the city meant. There's a key with most of the others pages in the, in the presentation, but just wasn't entirely sure if that was elevation levels, if it was timelines, or just what am I looking at here?
Are you sure?
Excellent and very observant question, Counselor. On page 5, sewer system areas, the areas that are in blue are areas that have already been assessed, and significant remedy has occurred, much of the 40 miles. The areas that are in orange begin the assessment this summer through the sewer's next sewer system evaluation survey. Again, that's word salad, but S-S-E-S. And then the, the salmon in the purple are two more inland areas because we split the system up into basically remaining pieces. The orange pieces are, you will notice, are more along the coast, fit with that EPA, I don't want to say mandate, it started as a mandate, we softened them to a preference that we do the work along the coast while we still don't forsake our inland challenges.
Understood, and I presume that same pattern will follow on page 6?
That's exactly correct. Yep. The drainage catchments each have an outfall, a dot, so it's, the, the circles of the colored areas are the streets and yards that flow out of a, a very specific pipe that we measure and we prioritize the catchments in the same way. Ones we've already been through and completed, ones we're in the process of completing, and ones we're heading to. Because not only do we go to each and every outfall, which we've done numerous times now, but we actually camera each and every pipe throughout the system. We test and assess each pipe.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you very much. One last thing that I just wanted to sort of make note of, if I'm reading it correctly, you know, page 4, we've got over 208 miles of sewer, roughly 96 years old. And then on page 18, kind of a chart that goes over work that's been done for, for sewer. With the planned work for 2023, if that work happens, we'll have over 40 miles of pipe, sewer pipes specifically replaced, which would equate to roughly 20% of, of the entire system within the last seven years at the end of next year. That's quite an accomplishment, and I just wanted to say thank you to your team, including the GIS team. I love looking at all the data that we've been able to collect, so we're in good hands moving forward, and the actual team that's out there doing the work itself. So, I just wanted to point that out because, you know, for a system that's about 100 years old, to have, you know, 20% of it within the last seven years is, is quite, quite a big deal. So, I just wanted to say thank you on that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Of course. That is my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, I have a few questions. I know this pertains mostly to page 4. I know we obviously have five stormwater pumping stations. You know, Counselor Phelan talked a lot about the Strand. How, how are we doing? I know obviously going back and it's, it's kind of blends in a little bit with, with our storms that we had back in March of 2018. I know there was some funding for the Willows Pumping Station, Army Corps of Engineers. Where are we in the process of that particular pumping station? Is it started? Are we in the process? What has happened with that?
We're nearly completing our inundation model for not only citywide, but the whole Houssneck area. We're not just looking to the Adams Shore, we're looking at all of Houssneck to see where the right location is for a pump station, and do we need a pump station? So, that's where we're at now. The Army Corps was the Willows. That was part of the, the old covert, and we've been working with them on that. One of the issues is, the actual covert is owned by the MWRA. They have to go in and actually test to make sure it's structurally solid enough to do any work that might be needed there. We don't, we're not, after initial study, we're not even sure anything has to be done in that area. But as far as the pump stations, yes, we are still looking at that, and once the inundation model is, is done for the whole area, we'll know if it's needed and the proper place to put it. One of the things, one of the things we did within the seawall, Counselor, the new seawall has a drainage system built in. So, the 18 storm, what happened was the water came in and the tides kept coming in. The water never had a chance to get out, even at low tide. With the new wall system, there is drainage built in, so now water that comes in can get back out at low tide. So, we haven't had a situation yet where that's been tested. Two weeks ago, we got the other flooding. It was, it came in on the backside of the neck, down in Rock Island and that area, Germantown, so we, we didn't really get to, the seawall was great. High tide got nowhere near the top, so that worked.
How are we doing with those seawalls? Are they completed now? We had all the way from Chikatah but all the way down Manet Ave into Houssneck. Are we in the completion stage?
They started Manet Ave, so we are assessing now a next phase of seawall, possibly moving from Manet Ave up that way.
Further up? Okay. Obviously, so you have, we have, it says we have five stormwater pumping stations throughout the city.
Yep.
Where are our five pumping stations? By the, besides the Strand? We have one in West Quincy?
Pump stations at, we have Quincy Point... We have pump stations at, we have Quincy Point, we have over in, off of Kwama Street, Rose Road, we have the strand, we have, there's a pump station on Cow Road. What am I missing, Joe? Alrick Road, yes.
Carlisle.
Carlisle, yes.
Okay. So West Quincy is the Alrick Road one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just on the jurisdiction, obviously with Walston Beach being DCR, how do we, how do we get by going out and getting work done? Do, do we have to go through any channels with, with the state, or how can we?
We've been working well since this with DCR on their outfalls, and we've gotten a lot of information since then, and they've been so far pretty good to work with, so making sure that they are maintaining their outfalls.
So they, they're, they're in compliance, they have to do the outfall piping, state?
Any, any outfall that they own.
They own.
But again, our waterways, our piping system goes into their outfalls. So we have to work together.
Now, how do you proceed with a situation where you know a storm's coming? How do you go out and, you know, clean up all these catch basins, clean up all these manholes? Do you have a protocol that have in place to attack?
We have a protocol in place. We know the problem areas. We know what tide gates to check, we know what to put down, what to close, what to open. We know what catch basins back up. We know where all the low lying areas are, and we do the best we can. Sometimes you can't fight the tide, you know? Mother Nature, you're gonna do the best we can, but again, two weeks ago, we had flooding issues. The water came in the backside, again, the other side of House Neck, parts of Squan and Marina Bay. It was an extremely high tide with a high surge, and that's where we're working on that whole inundation model citywide to see how we can try to alleviate some of these situations.
You know, it's been almost, we're coming up on five years of this happening in March of 2018, and it's almost like the, it's like, you know, if it, if it will, will happen, it's, it's, it's when, obviously, because Post Island Road was just destroyed, and it made it over that seawall. Hopefully you have the proper outfight, outfall piping that goes out now and kind of like doesn't have that bathtub effect where it sits in that area?
We've had some major high tides with some storms and, you know, it's, it's been, it's been great. I've been down there, I've stood on the wall during some of them, and it's adding those two feet has...
So you, you know the problematic areas in the city, the catch basins and the different manholes that you're like, okay, we gotta get those cleared, because if we don't, it's gonna, it's gonna clog up and it's gonna cause problems. So you know those. Is it a team, or is it just you, Commissioner?
No, it's a team, no, I'm, I'm...
I know you like to go out on the road yourself, I see you out there a lot.
We have a great team and our, our staff, our, our drain department, they're right on top of it. They're great, they know the problem areas and they know what to do.
Yeah, my fellow counselors talked a lot about the EPA, but I'm just trying to proactively get ready for whatever can approach us. Remember some years ago, back in 16, we didn't have any snow in January, and then January 26 came around and we had 111 inches of snow.
Please don't remind us.
You remember that?
Don't remind us.
And up here, we had to figure out how to budget that stuff over, over three, five years. We had to, we had to move things around, it was like 13, eight, one million dollars. So I remember all these things that happened here in, in our city, you know, and it's just, it's just we have to be proactively ready at all times for anything to happen. Those are the two things that, 100 inch, 111 inches of snow and our, our storm of 2018 here in the House Neck slash Wood One, Murray Mount, Germantown, Adam Shore, I mean, it got hit hard. So, Counselors, I'm gonna open it back up if anyone wants to rebuttal.
Rebuttal, I just have a, I just have a question.
Okay, we'll give it to you. Counsel Mahoney.
So I just tried to flip through quickly. Is it, is it 10 years? Is that how long, is that the decree? Do you have 10 years? As I'm trying to go through, it looks, it looks like, okay, so it's for 15, because I was trying to go through and see like, 2031 was the longest I had got to. So you have $100 million that we have to spend over 15 years, that's what they're kind of telling us that we have to do. And then the other question that I had was for the compliance reports, I saw that you did one in September and October of 2021, then we did one April, October, November. Is it three times a year, or is it just, is it just, do, do they tell you when you have to do it, or is it, because I didn't see a schedule. I was flipping through to see if I could find the schedule, but I do like to read these things. I know some people don't like to read, I like to read.
You've done well to read it. The compliance reports are...
Lets me sleep at night times, this is what I do.
Compliance reports are twice a year on October 31st and April 30th, every year during the 15-year period.
Okay.
And then early on in the consent decree, some of the paragraphs you spoke to earlier, Counsel Mahoney, there are specific reports that are due at certain milestones. We had one due this September 30th, one due this November 30th.
Okay.
Which is why to date, there were five, five compliance-based documents that are on the website. Three compliance reports, and then a sewer system evaluation survey report, and in a listed discharge detection elimination report.
Well, it would be hugely helpful, I mean, I could go through this and figure it out myself, but it would be helpful like to know that, like kind of broken out, you know, you have five compliance reports submitted to date, like you just told us that we only have two that we have to do, which is in, you know, I think you said, you said October and April? Oh, sorry, I might have messed it up, I messed it up already. Two, two times a year that you have to do it. And then do you have other, so we had two extra ones that were specific reports that had to be done? Are there other ones that we have to do to the course of the 15 years?
It is every three years, we must do a sewer system evaluation survey. To, to Counselor Andronico's point, the next, the next sewer system evaluation survey will be in the orange section.
Okay.
I left it over there.
I'm sure you went through all of that when you were going through the presentation, and I missed it, Mr. Shea, I'm just trying to keep up.
But along the way, there are interim milestone reports that are in addition to the compliance reports. But there will be a string of sewer system evaluation survey reports due early on while we assess and identify sewer issues to be remedied within the 15-year period.
And then my only other question in regards to that is because we're a city that's developing, almost every square inch of our city is developing, and we do have old sewer lines that you're being, you know, we're being asked to maintain and do. How do we manage the new buildings that are coming on to be able to make sure that we're not over, you know, that we're not, that we're not putting too much through our system so that it's not creating a negative impact? Like you're doing all this work, and then we put on, you know, 600 units here, 500 units there. How does that, how do we make sure that we're not stressing those very units, those very pipes that we're trying to maintain? And that's, that might be a silly question, it's just...
No, it's a good question. I know that Commissioner answered a question very similar to it earlier tonight.
And I apologize, I'm sure you answered many of these questions already, but I think it's just helpful.
There's a technical review done on any development projects, whether it's through the certificate of consistency process, or a planning board, zoning board peer review that includes looking at the capacity of the sewer system, the storm system, the water system. Chen Sang in the Commissioner's office does much of that review on certain projects, others are farmed out.
Yeah.
And the items such as the consent decree requirements, items such as a, a construction limitation in Town Brook because of smelt spawning season, there's, there's a myriad of overlays that are all applied to the contractors to make sure that the work that they're doing is in alignment with all of the city's obligations.
Do we have to show that to the EPA too? Like, is that something that you have to also balance out with the EPA when you have additional areas of, of resources that you're doing? Because they're looking at this, you just went through this consent decree today and they're looking at 10, 15 years, and then we're building out things as we do it. How do we make sure that we're not, you know, as much as we, I know we're looking at these things, how do we make sure that somehow there's not a miscalculation in something? I'm not trying to say that there is intentionally, I'm just trying to, you know, these types of things happen and then, you know, and I'm just trying to understand that because how do, how do we ensure that we're, we're taking care of those things?
So the, the EPA doesn't comment, to my knowledge, on specific development proposals?
So they're just strictly going off the consent decree that, yeah?
But we are perpetually monitoring the capacity in the system, to which the city of Quincy's sewer system is quite robust. We have no limited pipes, we have issues with fat soils and grease, as I...
You have issues with what, sorry?
With, with fat soils and grease temporarily clogging pipes, but in terms of upsizing and enlarging pipes, Quincy's got a very robust system.
The reason why I ask that is because when we started talking about it, it was Mr., President DeBona was mentioning, you know, the Willows and the area, in that, you know, the fact that we put the, the, we increased the, the, the walls and the overflow came in from behind and the things that we talk about. And I know when we're talking about development, we're saying that we're gonna pass through so we can develop on stilts and different things, but you see it all over when you're talking about this is, you know, global warming is a real thing, and we're losing coastline throughout, it's, it's on the news all the time about this, and you, you just know that this is something that we need to prepare for. And although we're talking about sewer and outflow, it all kind of comes down to the same thing, where the water has to go, and then how much water is out there to come back in. So I just do get concerned about that, but I, I don't, again, this isn't about whether or not we're, we're trying to get all this done or how we're getting it done. I'll go back to the fact that budget's very important to me, $100 million, however we're gonna spend it, it's important. I know that we paid the $115,000, I'd like to see where that came from. And then also, one of the other things that was said was that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in legal fees. It's important for us to know exactly how much, what we did so that we can be prepared for anything that comes in the future. These are things that happen not just in Quincy, they happen everywhere. They're reviewing these things, you know, banks go through regulatory requirements as well. It's part of operating a municipality. It's, it's part of unfortunately, the job, and, you know, we end up with a $115,000 penalty. That's much better than it could have been, so I think that's something that we should be focused on, the fact that these are the things that we have to do. It makes for your job much harder because you have many more reports that you have to file, but, but then the benefit of is the GIS and what we're doing, we're learning so much more about what we have to get accomplished too. So I think rather than look at the negativity, or federal bureaucracy, or whatever we want to focus on and say this is a terrible thing that we've had to go through, it's what we've learned from it, that's the positive that we should be taking out of it, because rather than, and so oftentimes I'm up here being very critical about something, and this is something that I can turn around and say there is actually a positive side to this, and that's the benefit of what we've learned and how much we've accomplished and how we can go forward, but more importantly also, how we're gonna be developing out our city to make sure that we can manage the things that we're doing. And then we really have to get a grip on really being able to present that budget side of things too, because it's important for us to see the full picture. But I just want to thank everybody.
Just one more comment on your capacity issue. One of the positive things we're doing as we line these pipes, because there is an issue throughout the city with inundation, water also gets into our sewer system.
Yeah.
That's going out to the MWRA, we're paying for that.
Oh, I know.
So by doing all this work and lining these pipes, we're eliminating that which is bringing our costs down, so that's, that's an important part.
That's actually an incredibly positive way to end that meeting, to end this meeting, because that is a very, that is a very real thing too. So, you know, I'm all for that, because people do forget that part too, is that, you know, the water that's going out, and please, people, don't dump things down our sewers, that's just a, that's just a, you should not be doing that. And don't play in water that's flooded, because it's, it's dirty water for our kids. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Good, Counselor.
Any other counselors? Just for clarification, that was 2015 for the 111 inches of snow, so I said 16, but it was 15.
15 was the snow.
Because I was on the school committee, we had to figure out how to make up the days for school.
18 was the flooding.
18 was flooding. But thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your team for coming in tonight. Really was important with the PowerPoint. It allows folks to go back and take a look at it, it allowed our Counselor Harris to go back and take a look at baywater, baywater, and show the folks out there where he's representing his constituents, so thank you very much for your time. That completes our agenda items for tonight, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're moving on. Approval of previous meeting minutes, December 19, 2022, we got a motion by Counselor Kane and a seconded by Counselor Phelan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next item is communication and reports from the mayor, city officers, and city boards. Seeing none. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Counselor Liang, I recognize you.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to start by just apologizing, I should have caught this earlier when we had voted on the council calendar, but I did not, so I'm going to take this opportunity to do so and respectfully ask if I could make a motion to amend our next meeting, Monday, January 23rd, and actually move it to Monday, January 30th. So, you know, I would need a second on it and then ask for a vote of this body to support that amendment. It's Lunar New Year the, the day before, and so I'll be celebrating that with my family, and we'd love the opportunity to make sure that I don't miss a meeting because of the biggest holiday certainly in my culture. So I'd like to make a motion to move the January 23 meeting to Monday, January 30th. Please.
Motion made by Counsel Liang to move the January 23 meeting to the 30th and seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Real quick on that, that might help out, we have some stuff in committees that want to come out, and it needs to be advertised in time, and this actually will solve the problem of allowing the advertisement, so this will be good.
Great, that a cultural holiday can help with our government.
Okay.
Schedule a figure, and that was the meeting.
Are you, okay?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, it's no offense to Counsel Liang, but I had scheduled time to be away, and that was over that period of time, realizing I wouldn't miss a meeting, so I'm gonna vote no on it.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, don't be. It's, no, yeah, no, this is not, this is not personal here.
All right, so we have a motion to move this 23rd to the 30th and a seconded by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
No.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Five yays.
So five in the affirmative the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Any unfinished business in proceeding meeting from anyone else? Just a quick note, we're gonna keep the rest of the calendar intact, just because the fact that we're all pertaining to, to have other, other options going on in the future here for the next 12 months. Reports of committees. Anyone? Presentation of petitions, memorial, and remonstrance. Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize that last week, the family of Margarita Bellotti put her to rest, who was longtime Quincy resident. Family lived in Ward 3 and was the longtime husband of former Attorney General, Lieutenant Governor Frank Bellotti, who we all know very well. I think everyone in the city of Quincy and, and other parts of South Shore touched the Bellotti family in one way or another, and I don't know how you couldn't with 12 kids that Frank and Maggie had and their 26 grandchildren and 12, or 11 great-grandchildren. But Maggie was a, a strong pillar in this community, working with many community organizations, and of course, would be nowhere, or Frank would be nowhere without her. You know that such a strong marriage of 73 years, having to deal with what we very know personally up here and some of our colleagues in government, that our spouses are the most important part of what make us, you know, successful in this role. And for a woman to stand by her husband for so long and to have such a storied political career speaks volumes. She was intensely dedicated to her family, her multiple levels of, of children and grandchildren. She played the piano. She was also strongly devoted to Christ and, and the Catholic Church, and was a parent in her many voluntary efforts through St. John's and other organizations throughout the city. So just on behalf of the city and the city council, want to express our condolences to the Bellotti family for the loss of Maggie, who is a very strong and dedicated and wonderful woman, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.